Welcome to the 10th meeting of the year. Today is April 22, 2024. Alyssa, please read this statement.
In compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Law of 1975, notice of this meeting to be held at the South River Middle School Cafeteria, 3 Montgomery Street, South River has been published in the Home News Tribune, posted on the Municipal Building Bulletin Board, the Borough Website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building, and the South River Middle School Cafeteria.
Roll call, please.
Merrick Indy?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman Seulus not here. Councilman DeZimian? Councilman Greczynski?
Yeah.
Councilman Krenzel?
Here.
Council President Olivera?
Here.
Please stand for the slotted flag.
I'm going to leave you to the flag. United States of America, through your model of justice, on the nation, a hundred dollar individual delivery of justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment. We may be seated. We have nothing for proclamations. We're going to go into new business. Alyssa, please read the 2024-159.
Resolution 2024-159, resolution to read budget by title only. Whereas NJSA 40A:4-8 provides that the budget be read by title only at the time of the public hearing if a resolution is passed by not less than a majority of the full governing body, providing that at least one week prior to the date of the hearing, a complete copy of the approved budget as advertised had been posted at Town Hall, and copies have been made available by the clerk to persons requiring them. And whereas these two conditions have been met, now therefore be resolved that the budget shall be read by title only.
What is your pleasure?
Motion to adopt.
Like to open it up to the public?
Hold on, let me just do roll call first. Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Greczynski?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
I'd like to open up to the public. Give me a 10 minutes. Please state your name and address. First reading, our first call.
I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
No.
Yeah.
This is public. This is going to first.
Motion to close.
All favor.
Aye.
You can't hear us?
Yeah.
I'd like to open up to council discussions, anything?
Do we need to do the self-examination with quicker resolution first?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor, I make a motion to authorize a self-examination of the 2024 municipal budget.
Second.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Greczynski?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adopt the 2024 municipal budget, Resolution 2024-160, adoption of 2024 municipal budget.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Krenzel, second by Councilman DeZimian.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Greczynski?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
All right, we're going to go into an agenda session. For first reading, we have we have three ordinances. The first one is on Salt Shade Ordinance, which is, Artie? Yeah, go ahead. All right, thank you. Thank you. We're going to open up to the second reading. Alyssa, ordinance 2024-13, please.
Ordinance 2024-13, ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter 350 of the Borough Code of the Borough of South River entitled zoning.
Motion to wait for reading.
Motion by Councilman Greczynski, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
All favor.
Aye.
I'll be opening it up to the public. Have 10 minutes. First. Only second.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman Greczynski.
All favor.
Aye.
Council discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Seconded.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman Greczynski.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Greczynski?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-17.
Ordinance 2024-17, an ordinance amending and ordinance fixing the salary ranges of certain Borough officers and employees in the Borough of South River.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Councilman DeZimian.
All favor.
Aye.
Open it up to the public. First.
Mayor, I make a motion that we close public hearing.
Seconded.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman Greczynski.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open it up to council discussion. What is your pleasure?
Motion to adopt, seconded.
Motion by Councilman Greczynski, seconded by Council President Olivera.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Greczynski?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-18.
Ordinance 2024-18, an ordinance amending Borough Code, Chapter 155, fees.
Motion to wait for reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Greczynski, seconded by Council President Olivera.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like to open it up to the public? First call? Second call?
Mayor, I make a motion that we close public hearing.
Seconded.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion? What is your pleasure?
Motion to adopt, seconded.
Motion by Councilman Greczynski, seconded by, sorry, seconded by Council President Olivera.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Greczynski?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-19.
Ordinance 2024-19, an ordinance of the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 13 entitled Administrator Officer.
Motion to wait for reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Greczynski, seconded by Council President Olivera.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opening up to the public? First call?
Mayor, I make a motion that we close public hearing.
Seconded.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman DeZimian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open it up to council discussion? What is your pleasure?
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2024-19.
Seconded.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman Greczynski.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Greczynski?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
We are now going to start the first reading. Alyssa, 2024-20.
Ordinance 2024-20, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 258 entitled Property Maintenance.
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance 2024-20 on its first reading by title only, and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with the second reading and public hearing to be held on May 13 at 7:00 p.m. by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Greczynski?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-21.
Ordinance 2024-21, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 319 of the Township Code entitled Tree Removal and Woodland Management.
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance 2024-21 on its first reading by title only, and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with the second reading and public hearing to be held on May 13 at 7:00 p.m. by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Seconded.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilman DeZimian.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Greczynski?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Alyssa, 2024-22.
Ordinance 2024-22, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 350 of the Township Code entitled zoning.
Mayor, I move that council pass ordinance 2024-22 on its first reading by title only, and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with the second reading and public hearing to be held on May 13 at 7:00 p.m. by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Motion by Council President Olivera, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Greczynski?
Yes.
Councilman Krenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to go into reports. Bruce?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The 2023 Local Aid Program and the 2024 Local Aid Program, we have that basically done. I'm going to go out in the field with the person designing it, walk everything, they'll make the final changes, and then we can submit that to the DOT. The 2023 Local Aid Transportation Projects Grant, the Borough received a $575,000 grant for that, and we submitted a proposal to the Borough for the engineering and surveying services. The 2024 Local Transportation Projects Grant is still open until June 30. Since you were successful with the one above it, I think it would make sense to apply. Mr. Landeski and I have discussed that. I had submitted a proposal for doing that in the latter part of last year. I will just redate it and resubmit it. And if you'd like to move forward with that, we will get it in. The electrical substation maintenance, we processed the change order to the contractor for the batteries, and the stormwater assistance grant application. You received a $25,000 grant. You get $15,000 upfront. We have basically performed services up to and just slightly above that. We're going to get together whatever information the department needs to prove that we have done that. Then they will advance the other $10,000 to the Borough. And if you would like, then, we can make an application to the DUP for the next year's funding. And that is it. Thank you.
Hey, Bruce. So I was reading in the paper today that I saw, like, Cerbal, I believe, got $3.1 million. Part of it was five boroughs of Middlesex County that got massive amount of money.
I don't think that was out of trust fund.
Okay. I believe it was stormwater. If I'm not mistaken, something to do with stormwater.
Those numbers make me think it was a line item appropriation that might have come out.
Okay. Trying to see if I can pull it up. Yeah, it's for $17 million. It's distributed in five central Jersey towns for disaster protection. So if it's something, part of it was storm. Okay. 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 Yeah, if it's something we can continue to do, then man billed that $5 million to. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Bruce and Joe.
Thank you.
Anything else for Bruce? Joe?
Thank you. A couple resolutions on the agenda. The first one is a resolution entering to a lease agreement with Kiocera Coffee Machines under state contract. Second one is a professional service resolution for recreation services, two tax appeals for the apartment complexes. Third one is a resolution regarding radio dispatch sold by the police department under state contract. And the last one is hiring spring employees for the recreation program.
Thank you, Joe. Anything for Joe? Counsel?
Joe, you might as well bring that.
Yeah.
So he doesn't have to get out.
Age?
Yes. Today, we started hydro flushing, and it went well. It runs till May 9. Also, our shred event is Saturday, May 11, from nine a.m. to noon at the EPW R9 Highway. It's open to all Middlesex County residents, residential paper only. Will be accepted, no businesses. It's a limit of five pile boxes or 100 pounds per car. And also, we are still out there doing model control.
All right, thank you, Age. Counsel, anything for Age?
Age, just want to thank the Parks and Rec guys, Daily's Pond. We had our first game on there this past weekend. They did a phenomenal job. So just please thank, not just them, but all the DPW workers for everything they do.
Fire Chief Miller?
Mayor and Counsel, we are currently operating in 119 hours a year. All fire and fire is continuing to go along the service. I may be able to go into Borough Yard for inspection and oil change. Nothing on report, thank you.
Thank you. Please, Chief. Alyssa?
I don't have anything.
Andrea? That's great. Thank you. Anything for Counsel? All right, Art?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. 163, we've authorized temporary appointments. As you know, one of our patents is out of bill. We'll be out at the beginning of May. It left us with one single patent, and it would get us much again. So we pressed back our entire patent to help them out some way. The next one is 167. We're going for a request or proposal. The DEP require us to do unit directional flushing in the target area. It's more than our water department can handle. But we need a whole bunch of people open valve, closed valve, and flush in the opposite direction. So this is that RFP. It's allowed in one sweep. Get our response back. We come back to example of a professional service contract to do that. And the last one is 172, support suitability for campus business regarding what this is, the next step. The Borough has to give a letter of support. The campus commission, the Borough couldn't give a letter of support until they got their zoning approval. They didn't get their zoning last month. So this is the next step for them to get to the permanent one. The last thing is progress on the flooded elevator shaft. Hopefully, I can award a contract and work sheet in the next couple of days. You know, quotes. Hopefully, we back into council chamber by the next week. Go ahead.
Art, I do have a question in regards of the DEP required reverse flushing. I know most of our lines are well over 100 years. And with us now reversing everything, what's the likelihood of mains, or for that matter, valves, you know, blowing, cracking, leaking?
They feel that universal, unidirectional in the reverse will clean out some of those veins before we do the chemical change, which is in process.
No, you understand.
So we get that clean. And you know, one thing we're adding onto the chemical is a chemical that adheres to the pipes on its side and reduces that rust off until we replace the pipes.
Okay.
Trying to put this up ahead of the chemical change.
And the DEP is requiring this, Art? The DEP is requiring this?
Yeah, the universal, unidirectional flushing was one of the violations that they required.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Art. We're going to start with council reports. Councilwoman?
Not to be in competition, but there's also a big ready event and now it's just this Saturday. You're supposed to be at 3:00 p.m. at 2:00 p.m. at Edville. You can install Sack of Government Chair towards the document. Just drive in, you know, from the front and take it from there. And the only other thing is Saturday, May 11, is the national, right? About the staff of the Department of Public Offices is related. But keep an eye out for the postcard. Your debt, if you need your phone pair to play your, play your mailbox, make it go to R, post office, and then it goes to R.
Thank you. Councilman DeZimian?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
We had the second open house to the public meeting on the budget this past Saturday. And this Thursday, the Board of Ed will be releasing its budget for the year at its public meeting, which is at 7:00 p.m. at the high school. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Greczynski?
Thank you, Mayor. And to Mayor. There is not a lot happening at the Office on Agent. The next event will be coming up. And please watch your Borough calendar for any events with the Office on Agent. The only other thing that we have too is a neighborhood watch meeting, and a kickoff meeting would be this Thursday on April 25 at 6:00 p.m. South River VFW. They request a signing to get across the number of how many attendees are going to be there. You can go online and look on your South River Police Department and Borough Website and sign it that way or on the QR code. And with that, that's all I have. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Krenzel?
Hi. Is anybody else keeping my report? I have to add.
Council President?
All right. So from a Parks and Rec perspective, the recreation cheerleading program will be offering a free clinic this upcoming Saturday, April 27. Ages 3 to 5 are from 11:00 to 12:00 p.m. Ages 6 to 9 are 12:30 to 2:00 p.m. And ages 10 through 17 is 2:30 to 4:00 p.m. Location will be determined. We're shooting from the primary school. But please look on the Parks and Rec Facebook page for further details on that. As Councilman DeZimian mentioned, we had our second public budget hearing for the public to ask questions. Again, just want to thank the Budget Committee. I want to thank Mr. Zanga, Art, Mr. Stankiewicz for everything for showing up on Saturday. This is something that we brought back to the Borough after a couple of year hiatus. I don't know how long it's been, Joe. Four or five years prior to COVID. So this was an opportunity to ask questions. I'm glad everyone thought the budget was amazing because no one came. But again, just thank you for all the hard work that you guys put into this. It couldn't be done without you. In terms of other Parks and Rec items, our spring sports are now in full effect. We have softball start, flag football. Flag football program has over 110 registered participants, which is great. Youth baseball. Merrick Indy will talk about his opening day pitch. It was quite the worst pitch you would see if you guys were there. But pleasure to see. At the end, I also want to address, you know, it's worse kept secret in town. This is my final meeting. I have resigned from my position on the council, and I will address that matter during council comment. All right? That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. I will hold my comments to later. There are no mayor appointments. I will open up the floor to public. You have 10 minutes. Please state your name and your address.
Joe, you want us to bring you the mic?
Yeah, you want to bring it to me?
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, Joe, from 3rd and Dale Street here in South River. It's a couple of things. Tonight, I gave a pledge drive to Mr. Landeski. It's got three items on it. The November 1978 report on the water distribution facilities, The November 1978 report on the water distribution facilities, the July 1998 water distribution system evaluation, and finally the 2020 report done by RE, which the municipality participated in, which got a lot of really interesting information on it as well. Hopefully you'll get a chance to put that on the municipal website. Also, I've been in contact with JCP and L about lighting on Main Street. Apparently they've been speaking to our mayor. And the next week or two, they should be in the process of completing the repairs. They're hoping to do it this week, maybe next week, so we'll put fingers across to see what happens. But it is JCP and L facilities, not county facilities.
That's correct.
The crossing at, in front of the senior citizen center at Rukowski Park, I understand that that is moving forward now, the adoption of the new budget. So hopefully see that in the near future. And the only other thing, I have just explanations for, like, there's stuff that happened in the prior meeting and I was reading through it, was Resolution 2024-151, awarding the contract to CDM Smith for professional services related to the financial and technical stability of the water main replacement program. I just want to explain to you what that is, why we're doing that.
What that contract is, is for them to prepare the application to the I-Bank for funding.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, was it clear when I'm reading it? And that's why I forget about it. And, okay. Understood. There's the outline, their proposal, is that available for public review? Their proposal itself?
Is their proposal available? Yes.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah, I know. Okay, thank you, thank you. The other question I have was the electrical substation maintenance. In my experience, when we have changes in the contract, it's usually something within the limits of what we would expect. But this one, you were talking about from eight batteries to be replaced, and now we have additional 84 batteries. Is there a specific reason why that's a big change?
They're not reliable. They're old and the company that we hired, we're monitoring, I said, down in the five year plate, one failure that we were able to repair, but they're very old.
No, I understand that, but usually in the contract, you check them, I know which ones might be questionable and you would include those. If we cut about eight to 84 more, it's significant.
Water acid battery, not sealed, so he tested over the year, but this year, the test that he did showed that they're failing.
Oh, so it's something that recently come up that didn't come up before and that's why we're doing, oh.
When he started to regular maintenance, he went and looked last year, this year, they're starting, it's not old, full charge, and it's very important for us that we're battery backups.
Okay, that's, that I understand. Resolution 2024-162, which is the preliminary design of a recreational center at Rukowski Park. Yes, I've seen a lot of people have been asking for that for a while. It's nice to see this moving forward. My question is, it's in a municipal park. Usually municipal parks, and I believe South River is no exception, they come under green acres if you have any type of funding in it. Automatically put it under green acres. Is Rukowski Park under green acres? And if it is?
It's split.
Yeah.
It's split, the pond part of it is under green acre, the other part is between the county and the park.
Okay, so.
Pond park on your left.
So it's a separate item and the DEP is not gonna have a big, or Green Acres is not gonna have a big fit about doing that. Because I know that's in, that might be a flood area too, so you have to be a little bit careful.
Yeah, so we did a flood study on that, Mr. Donato. And what we determined was we are able to go to the back half of the basketball court. We can replace template for template of the blacktop. So this is actually the second study that we're doing. The first one was a, I forgot the name, what was it, I'm sorry, the, what were you talking?
It was really a feasibility study, what was the delineation?
Yes. And we were able to determine where the 30 foot setback line or the, from the edge of the, the repair area.
50.
Yeah, so this is now the next phase. We originally tried to do it under a co-op, but I believe the price came back at $5.5 million, which is just unrealistic. So now we're trying to see if, you know, if we go out to bid, what's more reasonable.
Okay, like I say, well, not having been involved in it from day one, still something in my mind, I was wondering how we stand on that. So, gee, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public?
John Walsh to check out. I understand that there's a water rate increase coming down the pipe. Is that true?
That is, well, water.
Water rate.
Jason, would you like to please remember the, um?
Yes, so from a financial, from a financial perspective, what essentially happened with the budget was when we looked at everything as a budget committee, Middlesex Water, and Joe, please fix anything that I say that's incorrect. Middlesex Water provided East Brunswick with a increase, which was then passed down to the borough. That increase was about 4.5%. And then contractually, our budget, our water also increased. So the total increase for East Brunswick to supply South River water was about 5.8%, 5.23%. The remaining amount is going to go toward infrastructure repairs. So what we saw is, we saw an opportunity to fix a problem in the borough that has been plaguing us for 40, 50 years in the water line replacement. Our goal is to stop kicking the can down the road and start fixing what needs to be fixed. So the additional funds that are not going toward the increase are going to be put to fix the water and replace the water, I'm sorry, replace the water lines that are outdated, orange, which unfortunately the borough has, I think you mentioned it, what, 70% or so?
70%.
Yeah.
70% of the town.
So that is where the increase steps from. But it's actually financially responsible for us to do this, and I know it may not seem like it, but that's one of the reasons why we decided to lower electric roughly 5% to hopefully offset the cost for the residents. Because if we do nothing, we're gonna continue to have problems down the road. And 10% will turn into 20%. 20% will turn into 30. So now is the time, no more excuses. We have an administration that's willing to put in the work. So we're gonna do everything we can to make sure our residents have clean water.
Have we replaced any lines in the past, like in recent year?
So we have, but it's been emergency repairs, if I'm not mistaken.
Album?
Yeah.
And then also about the, Art, you were mentioning your reverse flow. So what does that mean for the residents? Are we gonna be, like, when you reverse the flow, is it just push electrical voltage back into the lines?
What they do, they open the pipe, shut up areas, flush, and, you know, clean it out, put some empty areas, it's not open. Do I guarantee we won't, we had any groundwater coming?
But I mean, are we literally reversing the flow?
Yes, literally.
Literally reversing the flow?
But maybe only during the flushing.
I'm sorry?
Only during the flushing.
Only during the process is what the water's gonna be?
Wow, okay. It just doesn't make any sense to me that, I mean, all I can think of is that, you know, you have a hot water heater, you drain it, the rust comes down. But if you have the hot water heater and you push it back the other way, it's just gonna go back into your lines, into your house. Like, to me, it seems like everything is used to going one way. And now we're gonna say, okay, let's, do we, do we get a second opinion on it? Do I have control, anybody else about that?
It's.
It just doesn't logically, it doesn't seem to make sense.
So this is not us choosing, we're being told we have to do this.
We have.
And this is not a permanent reversal. It's at night when they flush the mains, if the water normally goes in one direction, you flush it in the other because the tuberculation that forms on the pipes tends to gather whatever minerals are flowing in that direction. By reversing the flow, you have the chance of pulling all of that out, flushing it down into the street and into the drainage system. And then when the system goes back online, it goes back to operating the way it used to.
It's an outside company that comes on and goes?
And chemistry doesn't really get involved in this at this point. But for, right now, for the flushing, it's, it's a standard that the DEP has adopted and imposes on towns that when you flush, you flush either two ways or backwards. Not the way your water's always traveling, because you don't dislodge as much of the loose particles there and there.
And then how much water line are we thinking about replacing yearly? Do we have a program yet?
So with the I-Bank, the I-Bank would provide us funding, Art, if I'm not mistaken, for the, most of the project, correct? So we're talking about?
Large.
Yeah, 30, 40, 50 million dollars.
What is the I-Bank?
So the I-Bank, Art, if you want to explain it, because you did a great job at the last meeting?
Which I have the paper. Well, it is part of the NAPD. It's a bank that gives low interest or low interest loans to municipalities to help their quality of work. So you have to apply and have certain criteria for your application. You need, you know, an engineering company.
Hey, Mr., in addition to the I-Bank, we have written letters to Dawn, who is the special assistant. She has reached out to our state and our federal representatives. So Ms. Bonnie Coleman-Lotz, Melendez, and Cory Booker, to see if we can get federal funding, which would be grant funded into the budget appropriation. So I know Peter's been working hard at trying to get ahold of them. Our applications are submitted, we're ready. So now we get to be aggressive and make sure we're reaching out to them to try to get some federal funding.
And so would, like, repay it, go again and then with it?
Yep, so part of the I-Bank, if you, the, do water in sewer, you have to pay for the vote completely, and that's included. We have to.
So that increases the budget in water, would cover paying as well as water and sewer?
I would say.
Yeah.
This is, this is an intense project that's gonna go on for.
So the money's gonna buy anything over a million dollars? Okay, so the money's gonna tell us how much line we can replace a year or put in our plan?
Yeah, the, the plan that, uh?
No, like, how many, like, are we replacing 500 feet a year, 1,000?
So the plan that Mr. Donato spoke about, CDM Smith, that's what they're working on, creating a plan to submit to the I-Bank on what it was. But if I'm not mistaken, the I-Bank has, what, a four-year, five-year cap on certain projects? So we may have to do this within four or five years. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Anybody else from the public? First call, would you like to come up?
My name is Michael Spatter, I'm here now, lived here about 15 years. Came into the information of something that the town and the council hopefully will, uh, will wanna, wanna do or get out there to the community. We basically got ordered a DCA grant for let-in remediation. And the grant is free for homeowners, landlords, tenants, you know, for anybody who applies. They just have to qualify by income and family size. And, you know, I just wanted to share that with yourself and the council. And I also have information you could like, if I could have some, guys could give a look. You know, I think it's, it could be a great thing for residents who come to South River. You know, any 4978, you know, houses fall dead, kids, you know, getting sick, things like that. So I think this is a great opportunity for the town. You guys would like to promote it?
I would be interested, I'd like to sit down.
Sure, thank you.
I'd like you to move.
Thank you.
And what was your name and your street address? 25 what? E Street? Thank you, sir. I will reach out to you, thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public? First call? Second call? We have a motion.
Motion to close?
Motion by Councilman Krasinski, second by Councilwoman Ballas. Alyssa, we're gonna go into consent resolutions, 2024 to 1, from 162 to 175? Oh, I'm sorry, 176.
Whereas Resolution 2024-01 authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore being it is hereby resolved that the below listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole, as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions 2024-162 to 2024-176. 162, awarding a contract to CME Associates for professional services. 163, authorizing temporary appointment for the Department of Public Works. 164, authorizing release of photocopy equipment. 165, resolution appointing a part-time dispatcher. 166, awarding a contract to Sokler Realty Services Group Incorporated for appraisal services. 167, authorizing the solicitation of requests or proposal for professional services. 168, authorizing the purchase of a radio dispatch console for the police department. 169, authorize certain utility refunds. 170, appointment of Xavier Gonzalez as Labor A for the sanitation department. 171, resolution adopting the borough policy for request to apply for grant funding. 172, support for suitability of cannabis business, Garden River Incorporated. 176, 173, appointment of 2024 recreation apartment employees. 174, accept April 8, 2024, regular and executive session minutes. 175, authorize the bills and claims list. And 176, authorizing the execution of an employment agreement with Arthur Landenski as the business administrator.
Council, what's your pleasure?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, second by Council President Olivera.
Councilwoman Ballas? Councilman DeZimian?
Yes.
Councilman Krasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Crenzel?
Yes.
Council President Olivera?
Yes.
We do not have executive session, so we will be going to governing body comments. We'll start, Councilman Crenzel?
Okay. I attended the budget meeting on the 20th, no one came. Looking over the budget, doing, done enough these over the years. It's a good budget. We continue to move forward on several projects and slowly they will come to fruition. Looking over to the future, our meeting will be May 13th, so there's lots coming up between now and then. Ballas mentioned about the species trading event here in town, it's 2027. And I best wishes to several groups, happy Passover, happy Easter to those in the Orthodox Church, happy Cinque de Mille, happy Mother's Day. And finally, Councilman Olivera, it's been fun. Thank you for your service. It's been, I hope that you've learned something here, you know, I've served this town well. You know, best wishes on your endeavor to become a doctor after this year. Call him Dr. Olivera. And I can say that because I knew you're going to have to fly in colors, so good luck, sir. Okay?
That's all I have. Councilman Krasinski?
First off, I'd like to thank our police fire, Barbara Johnson, especially our DPDW for the job that they do to take care of our town. Today is Earth Day. With that, it's the start of our high trock flesh. And it is going to be at the south end of town, which is, the section of town that's closer to Old Bridge, just in case people aren't aware of it in the Borough calendar. And progressively, it's gonna go on on 4/29 in Area Two. And May 5th for Area One, which is the north end of town. With that, and also we have our Neighborhood Watch meeting coming up this Thursday at 6:00 PM at VFW. We urge you to go online and try to register or use the QR code if you can. If not, and you happen to attend anyway, we will try to accommodate as best as we can. This is at VFW at 6 o'clock in the evening. Also, Councilman Olivera, it's been a pleasure working with you. It's been a mission. With that, I, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman DeZimian?
Can't hear me too loud.
This Thursday will be the first Neighborhood Watch meeting. It will be at 6 o'clock at the VFW building on Reed Street. Any resident can attend, but you need to register prior to the meeting, which can be done by going to the South River Borough's website. This is a great opportunity to help your town by participating with the police department with the goal of preventing crime. And Jason, this is your last meeting. Me being the, my first year, actually my first couple of months, there's been many times I looked to you for answers and your leadership was outstanding. Thank you very much. It's gonna be sad for me to see you leave, but I wish you the best of everything in your pursuit of your PhD and good luck. Thank you. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ballas?
I know you're always worried about the, the approach of the street. It's has caused, we're, the only thing that I wish people would, may send it to, and I mentioned it, when they're coming off the streets, they're not, we're seeing the people signs because they're not safe. So they're going through the stop signs. But you gotta be very careful, mindful. The signs are there for reason. If they're following the meter, there's a lot of kids going back and forth now because they're getting closer. I'd like to say happy Mother's Day to all the owners. And to Jason, you will be missed. You got to work together on a lot of things. I hope you don't step back too far. I wish you much luck in getting your PhD. You will be a doctor. My niece will be a doctor next month. I, we appreciate everything you've done. Recreation Commission could not have done as much if people weren't there. We appreciate your time and.
Thank you. I'm gonna leave you for last.
Oh, shucks, thanks.
As you all know. Uh, as you all know, um, South River School is enduring a project that's right here next door, and the superintendent reached out to me in regards of this project. Uh, this project is on a time restraint, and, uh, they are requesting that, um, on this Saturday for the next two months, which would be, uh, May and June, uh, that when they start work at eight o'clock, of course, you know, there's a, um, noise ordinance, but, or I should say start ordinance, but for that one hour till nine o'clock, if we would be able to, uh, give them that, that one hour. Now, I know that they're on, like I said, they're on a time restraint, so I'm looking for that consensus from the council that, uh, we could help them out.
Of course.
Is it gonna be every Saturday?
It's not gonna be every Saturday, they're just, they're covering themselves for the next two months.
When do they start work?
They already started.
No, no, I mean, what time do they start in the morning?
Oh, eight o'clock.
Oh, no, it's not a problem.
Not a problem. Mr. Krasinski?
I see no problem with it.
Thank you.
That's okay.
All right, I will relay the message to the superintendent, uh, she's good to go. Hydrant flushing, listen, I know this is not easy, we hear about this all the time, that our water's brown. Yes, your water may be tinted. It happens two times a year where we have to flush the hydrants, so please bear with the Department of Public Works, uh, if it exceeds more than two or three days after they have flushed it, then I understand why you would call the Department of Public Works, and believe me when I tell you, they're gonna come out, they're gonna check your water. So please, bear with their, uh, flushing. Uh, we did pass the budget today, we have a really great budget ahead of us, uh, with the, uh, increase of water, but with the decrease of electric, you couldn't have any better. On April seventeenth, I had the privilege of being one of the speakers at a chamber of Congress in East Brunswick. Uh, let me tell you, it was a packed room, I sat with veteran mayors, Brad Cohen, Brad Womack from, uh, Woodbridge, uh, the mayor from, uh, Old Bridge couldn't make it, it was a great experience, but one of the things I learned was the amount of opportunity this town has, and although I brought it back to the EDC, uh, they're going to be, uh, distributing most of these grants, uh, there's more out there that's gonna help this town, and believe me when I tell you, the networking is coming here. Besides that, we've also had a very, very eventful, uh, April nineteenth, uh, I, uh, finally had the News Twelve Main Street Project come to town. Uh, we started at four o'clock in the morning, I know the chief is still a little upset about it, um, but we had the opportunity to visit five different, uh, stores, or five different, um, uh, facilities in town. Uh, the, the five were Ricanto, which is on Ferry Street, which, believe me when I tell you, they have such a great display of pastries, you need to come and see what you have in your own backyard. The second one was Sereno's, Sereno's, uh, their food is remarkable, uh, matter of fact, sodas, ricantos, they have a great, uh, spread when it comes down to sandwiches. Uh, we also got a chance to see the, uh, New City Fresh Market, which was right here on Main Street, they have a large amount of selections when it comes down to, uh, uh, groceries, of course, and we also had the opportunity to go see the Zepley guy, uh, when I tell you, if you don't have a sweet tooth after that, I don't know what comes after that. Uh, the, uh, spread was incredible, he does serve lunch, so that's something that you should all come and explore. And then we went to the Portuguese Fisherman, which we all know, uh, let me tell you, um, the Lauren Dunn, which is the, uh, reporter, she did a remarkable job, it is on TV, uh, let me tell you, South River has a lot to show, it really does, and there's a lot more coming, there's a lot, a lot of development knocking on our door, uh, I know that we're expecting to break ground in quite a few projects by the end of the year, this is your town, we're all here to work together and make it happen. I also had, as Council President, uh, Olivera said, I had the opportunity to throw the first pitch, I don't know how I got it to the, uh, to the plate.
We don't.
But it was a great, great, um, uh, day, beautiful weather, the kids were awesome, uh, I don't know what the outcome was on that game, did they win? Ten you, they won, all right, so congratulations on them. Neighborhood Watch, uh, this is something that has been a problem for this town for quite a while. Our Police Department does a remarkable job as it is, but it isn't easy, because at any given time, you could have three police, uh, police officers on the road, and at any given time, you could have just one. You are just as instrumental as they are, you are their eyes and ears, you are, you are more than just a tool, you are somebody that's capable of reporting what you have seen, and what you could do to help the Police Department. Please, register for this program, it's on April twenty-fifth at six o'clock at the VFW. You know, um, we all know this, the REAMR, uh, they just finished renovating, the facility is so, I don't even know how to express how remarkable, it doesn't even belong in this town. But this is what you're going to expect that's gonna come to your town. I urge you to go and see the new REAMR. It's with the lighting, with the waterfall, you're gonna enjoy your time. It was, yeah, exactly what Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Ballas said, it's spectacular. I urge you to go and, go to the REAMR. Huh, well, going into the bottom. Jason, um, I don't know how to say thank you. When I first, when I ran three years ago, um, I remember prior to that, uh, being on the council, I was liaison to the Parks and Rec, I saw something in the Council President, uh, that I never saw, and that was, um, his motivation, his determination to the town, how much he really wanted this town to move forward. Um, very well spoken, extremely intelligent, and with that, I knew he was gonna be an instrument to the, uh, council. Uh, we ran, we had a remarkable time, we did a lot of walking, lots of walking, but, uh, we got to know a lot, uh, within days, we were like best of friends, brothers. And here I am today, uh, I wanna say goodbye, but I know it's not a goodbye, I know that you're venturing out to, uh, uh, make it better for you when it comes down to education, and I, I applaud you for that. Uh, I know that one day you're gonna be back, I'm gonna be waiting for you, we are all gonna be waiting for you, South River's gonna be waiting for you. So I thank you for what you have done, and what you're continuing to do for our, our community. Seriously. And last and final to all your mothers, Happy Mother's Day. Council President Olivera?
So, as everyone mentioned up here today, huh? I speak loud. As everyone mentioned, you know, today is my last meeting, uh, what a lot of people don't realize is, over the course of the last year and a half, I had a new child, and in addition to having a new child, I embarked on completing my doctoral degree. Um, I did my best to try to, try to not have my education interfere with my political aspirations of serving on the council and serving the residents, but this has been by far one of the most gratifying experiences of my life, outside of my wife and my two beautiful daughters. Um, but I just, my mental health is very important to me, and it got to a point where I was struggling to try to balance both of them, and over the course of the next four months, I would have had to miss the meetings because I would be in class. Um, and as Mayor Gindi mentioned, this is not a goodbye, uh, this is a see you later. I do have plans on one day, hopefully, serving our residents again, of course, if I'm voted in, but man, has this been one hell of a, of experience. I started, uh, if you recall, I know Peter said it was cheesy, but one of my favorite authors says, seek first to understand, then to be understood. I think over the last two and a half, three years that I've served, it's really about understanding the process, understanding how great of individuals we have. Joe, you are by far the best CFO in this county, and I truly mean that, you are great at what you do, we're very lucky to have you, Mr. Stankowitz, best auditor, you know, you guys made the budget process extremely easy, um, and we can't thank you enough. Alyssa, you're a rock star, thank you for everything. Bruce, you as well, again, can't thank you, thank you for being patient with me as I bother you about the rec center as much as possible. Uh, and Andrea?
Can you say something about age to the board?
I'm, I'm gonna say something about age, John, he's gonna be last. Uh, I'm working my way around the table. Andrea, thank you for everything, uh, that you've done, I know in the beginning, it was, uh, a lot of decisions were coming up that, you know, were, might have been an issue, uh, but I can't thank you again for providing guidance, not only for me, but for this council. Uh, and Art, you know, man, you're amazing. Uh, this town is grateful to have you, uh, I'm happy that you received another contract extension for two year, uh, we're very fortunate that we have you in this position to lead the town and continue to grow. Our job is to make sure that you get additional help, we're gonna make sure that happens as much as possible, but thank you for everything you do, Art, truly mean it. Um, and of course, we got our Police Department Chief, I know it's not easy being a police officer now, we have a great force, thank you for everything you do. I think the steps that we're taking again as a council, as a community, uh, with the Neighborhood Watch, we're trying to be innovative, we're trying to do things, and I think you see that from this council, through, uh, Mayor Gindi's leadership, through his vision, South River will be great, it's going to be great, and it, we just need to work hard. And I think you have a council up here right now, that it's willing to roll up their sleeves, get their hands dirty, and make sure that everything, our residents come first, and that's something I wanna remind you guys, our residents come first, and we've been doing that. And of course, age, we have the best EPW workers, we really do, uh, they're amazing, they have great leadership on your behalf, you know, thank you for everything that you do to provide this town, but it's just not about us up here, what makes our job easy is the workers at Reed Street. Uh, I'd be wrong if I didn't mention Terry, I know you mentioned how great the rec department has, but Terry and Jessica are rock stars, they've made that program into what it is today, we've offered flag football, we've offered cheerleading, two of our biggest stuff that we didn't offer two years ago. So to see everything grow and flourish, now the onus is on you guys, and I'm leaving you guys with this, we need a rec home, we have no place, we need to be able to provide our children, our youth in this town with something to do, it's up to us to decide how we're gonna do that. So don't let it be when I'm running in a couple of years from now, as a doctor, uh, saying, where is this going? Why haven't we done anything? Uh, 'cause you guys know me, I'll go against the grain if I have to, so just thank you guys for everything again. Peter, thank you for asking me to run, I had no idea what I was getting myself into, but I feel like I've gained brothers and sisters up here, and lifelong mentors, and, uh, John, you know, never thought I would, uh, you know, thank you for taking me under your wing and having me learn, uh, Peter and I apologize for leaving you out here, you know, as a council president, uh, and having to transition things, but I can't thank you enough for everything, and making me take the leap of faith with you, uh, it's been a very gratifying experience that I'm very, very lucky to have completed, so thank you guys.
I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Council President Olivera, second by Council Dzimian, meeting is adjourned.
All right, now I gotta go to a rec meeting.